Should we go, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. All right. Today is Thursday, December 16th. At 5:37 PM, I will call to order the Capital Outlay Committee meeting. First, let's take role. We'll start with this one.
Ken Pacheco, Selectman.
Brenda Herbeck, Member at Large.
Robert Rendon, Chairman.
I thought Mike Ballen, Town Administrator.
Mary Hathaway, Treasure Collector.
And we have guests tonight. Chief McGee from the Fire Department. All right, let's please rise for the Fledge of Allegiance.
The Fledge of Allegiance, the key to flag for the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
So I know Town Administrator Mullen sent out an agenda. We're going to modify this slightly because I think we need to have a discussion about some of these topics before we actually move into the requests we've received from our department heads. So we're going to do item number five. Sorry, item number six first, which is the ARPA Funds Planning Update, and then we'll get into the item number five, which is the funding request for the Public Safety Repeater and Radio Upgrades. So with that, I'll ask Town Administrator Mullen, give us an update on the ARPA Funds Planning.
So yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So just really to recap, we have an ARPA allotment in total is approximately $2.3 million. Of that $2.3 million, we currently have $416,000 of that, which is half of our federal designated funding. In the total of our federal designated funding, which we will be receiving over two years, it's $832,000. The remaining approximately $1.5 million, we will have to apply for through Bristol County. And actually, the town accountant tonight, as well as the fire chief in this case, we sat in on a Zoom with Bristol County early this weekend. They're beginning to roll out their portal that will actually have a supply for our portion of the $1.5 million less, actually 10% in administration fees, which will be held back by the county. They should have that up and running soon. And there are approximately half a dozen qualifying uses for the funding. There are uses related to responding to the public health emergency. So there was some emergency response and public safety response, you know, opportunities that we have to be funded. We have the ability to fund some of our public health needs as well through the public health so-called bucket. Then there is a so-called bucket for water needs, which is pretty self-explanatory. Like anything really having to do with water infrastructure. And we've been having a conversation with the Water District about that. The third bucket is for sewer infrastructure. And we have about, like I'd say, probably what, she said, 40% of the town on sewer, roughly speaking, or is it more?
Less than that, I thought it was 30, wasn't it?
Okay, yeah, that sounds more like it, okay. So we've been having a conversation as a town about the sewer expansion for the last probably four or five years now. So we have the ability to pursue that as well. But so really, the cost, so the opportunities we actually have in funding through our, in terms of the $1.5 million, like in the $832,000, are really a drop in the bucket for our sewer needs. And what our sewer priorities, oh, that had been discussed. Then there is a bucket for what is called Revenue Replacement, which is a pretty convoluted formula, where we have to go through, can enter our revenues from the past few years and based on this really funky, based on this really funky federal government equation, we can qualify, so we can see if we qualify for Revenue Replacement. And if we do, so when if we do, the amount of revenue, so the amount of revenue that we qualify for, like any of that funding that we do qualify for, we have complete discretion over. Yeah, essentially funding whatever we want. I believe there's an education bucket as well. And what else am I missing, Janelle? There's one or two other ones, but it's. Oh, yeah, broadband infrastructure as well. And I think that's actually it in terms of those buckets. Yeah, childcare services, housing issues as well. We have the ability to do as well, but we're trying to take. Yeah, your rental assistance. But we're trying to really take inventory of our needs here in town. Yeah, and identify where we can really spend and how we can plan our funding based on those and based on what we're, you know. So and also based on what we're looking at, our capital priorities. So that being said, for the last three or four months, as we've been talking about these, we in the Board of Selectmen have actually envisioned all of our priorities coming first through the Capital Outlay Committee. So like, and that's why, so like, we do in the next few months, really hope to put like a full ARPA budget together. But we do have one project that is a critical project that. Yeah, like at this point, we're treating it as an outlier based on the importance of it. And that essentially moves us in to the following agenda item, which is for like the Public Safety Repeater and Radio Upgrades for our public safety. But yeah, we'll be working in the next few months. Yeah, like in terms of like formulating a bigger and broader plan, but that's where we are right now.
Okay, great. Any questions for the Town Administrator on these funds that will be coming in and what we're pursuing? Okay. Now let's talk about the pressing issue, which is our communication system here. Chief, do you want to give us a brief just overview of what the issue is and what we're looking to do?
So our repeater system, which is basically what all of our radios run through, it basically takes a signal in, boosts it up, and sends it out throughout town. That gives us coverage across. It is approximately 20 years old. It's obviously aging. We have a lot of dead spots that we knew of. Exacerbated with the response. Some failures. About Easter that we just had, to the point where we couldn't communicate with dispatch. And things along those lines. We had a survey done, Lieutenant Cronin, probably six months ago, eight months ago. We had two different companies come out and do a survey of the system. They both stated that the system we have is basically, for lack of a better term, a mall security system. So it's not public safety rated. It doesn't work. We have two repeater sites in town. There's one on William Street and there's one on Elm Street. It doesn't work with each other. So basically, if I'm in the south end of town, let's say on the Somerset Line on 138, I have to consciously say, or my personnel have to say, I got to switch to the Elm Street repeater. So along with trying to serve the people that are requesting assistance, now we're thinking about, we got to switch to repeater so we can. See, I need another ambulance, another engine, whatever it might be. So there's really some safety concerns. Along with, the police had an incident where they were down there. It happened to be an AT. Fire. Sergeant was trying to, he was working in detail, was trying to call dispatch and call it in. They couldn't hear him, couldn't understand him. So now we have this truck going up the highway that's potentially on fire, they thought, and he couldn't even get through to dispatch. Have, are not what is known as P-25. Is the digital age, if you will. So we have some mutually partners that are, have gone digital, that we can't communicate. So if we have an ambulance coming in from the town of Swansea, ambulance to say, hey, this is what we have. Be aware, this is a COVID house or whatever it might be. We can't give the information. It's going to assist us in getting up to that public safety rating. It's going to link both sites by a microwave, which is all included in the price, to be able to switch manually by police or fire or dispatch. It'll just do it on its own in milliseconds by picking which site. Going to give new portable rates that will make us P-25 capable to be able to have a program. Source communication to my Bristol County Control, which is out of Semarek in Foxborough. So it's, there's a lot of moving parts to it that will make the system better and get us ready to move eventually. So that's also something that the lieutenant and I are looking at from police and fire, to say that we're eventually going to have to move that way. Go to the taxpayer and say, this is what we need to do. So I think this is the perfect opportunity. It is a direct relation to the public safety response for COVID. And I think it's just an appropriate expense. Built into it is knowing that we lost a frequency on a couple occasions. We built in a redundancy, so we're going to put in what's known, we're going to refer to as a management frequency. So if police goes down for some reason, a fire goes down, we can have a backup redundant system to be able to say, switch over to that repeater and. So that's also incorporated and captured in the quotes.
Thank you. Any questions from the committee? Okay. I ask Selectman Pacheco, has the Board of Selectmen discussed this?
We've discussed it. We haven't had, I don't believe we've taken a vote on it, but we've discussed it. I think there's support in the Board of Selectmen for this. It's definitely a need. And if somebody loses their life because of this, what's the value of that?
Right. Now, I'm going to go ahead and take a step back. Anything that this Capital Outlay Committee votes on is a recommendation to both the Board of Selectmen as well as to the Finance Committee, okay? So that's going to be, so it's just our recommend, similar to what the Finance Committee does for budgeting. Anything that's capital outlay is our recommendation to the Finance Committee as well as to the Board of Selectmen. Okay. So my understanding is that for this system, we would like to go ahead and use these ARPA funds to purchase this system?
Yes.
Okay.
In the amount of approximately $273,000.
Right, yeah, I have the number up here. So.
So then the recommendation would go straight from my Capital Outlay to the Board of Selectmen, who would be making the vote to authorize the funding?
As long, yeah, that would be, the Board of Selectmen are the ones who are establishing the budget and the usage of these funds. So yeah, if they're the ones who are quote unquote, on the fund, then in the use of it, then yeah, that's who the recommendation would go to. And I don't even think we would have to go to the Finance Committee for this one.
No.
Right? Okay. So I will ask, is there a motion to be made here?
On behalf, I'd be happy to make a motion to recommend to the Board of Selectmen that the town fund the Public Safety Repeater Project, I can Radio Project, in the amount of $273,719.76.
Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mary. And I think because we are on video, we need to go person by person. So Selectman Pacheco.
I'm a non-voting member.
You're non-voting, that's correct. Brendan?
Yes.
Yes. Robert Rendon, yes?
Yes, I'm like Mullen, yes.
Mary Hathaway, yes.
Alvin, yes.
Thank you. Motion carries?
Good chief.
So now let's, we're going to go to item number, what did I say? What's next?
BP, yes.
Let's talk about BP and this, I wish it was only $350. I think you forgot.
Yeah, no, there was a figure, yes. I realized that this morning.
The BP School Building Project and Funding Discussion. I mean, let's just talk round numbers, right? So it looks like Dyson's portion would equate to roughly $230, roughly per.
It's a $241, maybe, it's a $241, it's 20 million or 22 million?
Yeah, so the total project liability for Dyson is approximately between $21 and $22 million based on how BP would do the debt service and structure it. So just actually, just actually, just actually, on. For like a 30-year level debt, our debt service on that would be approximately $800,000 a year, starting in year three. Our annual operating revenues going into FY '22, just as an example, only increased to about $750,000. So like the cost of that project year over year would far outpace, the cost of that project would far outpace. So our ability to fund that. All right, in terms of where we are now with our financial structure. So like if the project is approved, the voters are Dyson. I would probably have to consider a debt exclusion in order to fund it. There's a special election set right now for Saturday, January 29th, between a four-hour window of 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM for a significant $305 million building project. Of the project itself, $125 million will be funded by the MSBA. And the remaining, approximately $180 million will be absorbed and need to be funded by the member communities of BP. Sorry, yeah, as we know, it comes at a time where we're assessing our own capital needs and priorities, you know, as luck would have it. And it's, like, we, earlier this week, we met with our financial advisor on Tuesday from UniBank. So like, and talked about whether we had any other ability, instead of a debt exclusion, we like to fund it. So I didn't think we did, but I wanted to kind of have all options on the table. And she confirmed that the debt exclusion would probably be the likely way to go.
Right.
So that's where we are. We also face a challenge in our re-presington efforts because we, at the beginning of the year, we're going from two to three precincts. So we need, as we know, and. Oh, yeah, we're going through, we're going from two to three precincts, which means we need additional voting equipment, which needs, actually, on the 29th of January, the town clerk will need to rent voting equipment. Yeah, so it's a very. Yeah, it's a challenge in terms of assessing how and where we go forward.
Right, okay. So my take on this, from a Capital Outlay perspective, is we really don't have a whole lot of say in this. This is entirely up to the townspeople to vote on whether or not we are going to remain to be, and I don't know what the actual ballot question is going to be, if that's even been put forth yet.
Yes, yes.
Because if the ballot question is, is do we want to remain to be, remain as a participating member in the.
No, no, it's just an up or down vote.
It's an up or down vote. It's the majority of all the, you know, the voters of all the towns and districts in this BP.
Okay. And is it a cumulative vote, like person by person?
It's the majority of those votes that are taking.
It's not, if five towns voted positive and four voted negative, it passes.
My understanding is they add up all the votes and whatever has the majority. It's up and down.
Okay. So, yeah, so once again, though, from a Capital Outlay perspective, until that passes, we don't necessarily have a. Say, in, how we could possibly fund this now.
Yeah, I think we bring it to the attention of the.
Yeah, yeah, because there is a possibility that in the future, if we are fiscally responsible, that we could fund our Capital Outlay, our Capital Stabilization Fund with monies that would help to offset the taxpayer portion. Obviously, we would not have enough to offset every single year the full amount.
Yes.
And there may be some years where we can't offset anything. But in order for us to be responsible to the townspeople from a Capital Outlay perspective, it's something that we should be entertaining. Should the vote pass, we should be entertaining this as a thought process for the next 30 years.
Yeah, like, and how it affects everything else we need to do as well. You know, it's going to have a fiscal impact and.
Right.
Yep. And our whole ability to fund everything we need to fund.
Right. So. Any other comments or discussion on this topic? I think.
Mike had a call today. I don't think it's going to be the 29th of January. Yes, I think it's going to be in March.
Oh, okay.
That was just a heads up, but I don't know if it's, you know, set in stone. I did get a call that it might be.
Okay. So at this point.
So this evolves by the day, as we know.
So I believe our next meeting is in the February timeframe, since we're meeting every other month at this point in time. And although after February, we might have to go to monthly because of the budgeting process and what we'll have in front of us in terms of special articles, Capital Outlay requests. So we'll revisit this again in February to see when that vote is going to happen. If it does happen on the 29th, we'll obviously know the results. If it doesn't, then we would hold off to a future meeting to have any further discussion on that. Any other comments or questions on this topic? Let's move to item number four, which is the DR School District Meeting and Capital Update.
So I had a, I had a meeting with Dr. Azar two weeks ago. And they, in the DR School, like it's, so like have been working on coming up with their own capital planning, building needs analysis. So like they're working on that. As you saw, they did submit like a number of capital items for our consideration. But it's hard to really assess at this point how and. So exactly how they're going to go forward based on where they're going. Yeah, like in terms of how they move forward with the building needs study as well. And so that's all the information I have there. They are looking at it, but it makes. I see, like it makes. So like it makes our job, so like it makes our job like a little more challenging in terms of how we assess it.
Right.
So I just want to give everyone update there. Unfortunately, we don't have a lot of information from them at this point.
Okay. And what I wanted to do was, and I'm pulling up the, my last, the last budget. Because I want to see where. Where the. There's education in here. What our assessment, our capital assessment was last year for the schools. Because this, in '23, they already have, it looks like, close to half a million that they want to look at for us. There's education right there. Let's see, DR.
And there was the bottom line?
There's.
Okay.
So that was, but that was at 21?
Yeah, that was 21.
386. So we're looking at, you know, roughly our capital assessment for the last year and now this current fiscal year. It's been roughly $400,000. So for '23, based upon what they've submitted to us, they're at $620,000. So of which, almost half of that is for a generator.
Yes.
So for, and that is for the. The elementary school?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, the DES. And we don't have anything after 21. Yeah, the DES, and we don't have anything after 23, which makes it kind of difficult to forecast forward.
Right, right, but I, I think we could probably assume that we're going to probably be somewhere in the 400,000. Ballpark on an annual basis, at least right now, until they come up with their plan. But we never. Because it's an assessment and they decide what it is, we, we're kind of at their mercy at this point. Which is unfortunately. I, I think these things need to be done in conjunction when it has to do with. The, the Dayton campus, the elementary school and the middle school and the, and the high school, obviously. Should be done in conjunction with the town of Rehoboth, town of Dayton and, and the school committee. Because there's, there's only certainly. The school committee is looking out for the best interests of, of the schools, the students. But with everything that is going on in both towns. The, the appetite to be able to support that. To what the school committee votes on in terms of a capital assessment. Without giving consideration to what the towns have going forward into the future. Puts, puts the towns in a predicament of having to cut budget elsewhere. So without any of our input. That, that kind of puts us into that predicament, so. I am, I know there was a meeting this past Monday. I wasn't able to attend as I was out of town. I'm waiting to see the, the minutes as well as if they, I think they recorded it.
Okay.
So I can view it. I haven't been able to locate the, the video. It may just not have been posted yet if they did record it. To give us some insight into that, so for that, I will. I'll take it upon myself to report on that in February, at our February meeting.
They were trying to, then they have, well, I don't think the article ever came on town meeting, but. To form a capital stabilization fund of their own. Wasn't that on the plate at one point in time?
It was, but nobody spoke on it.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Nobody made a motion.
Schools are doing that, but I, I wasn't quite understanding how that would work. Cause who's money is who's at the district level.
Right.
Is that something we want to do? At the town to have a school. Stabilization fund to tap into if we need.
Separate, separate from the towns?
Cause you can have, you know, separate stabilization funds. I'm sorry, not many money would be enough to do that without anticipation of.
I would then just say, based on your experience and background, being familiar with town governments in the area. Have you seen separate school stabilization accounts? And how has it worked out for those towns?
I know, I only have no, I don't really know met boys that, so. But they're, they're not fully regionalized either. And they had their own poor unforeseen expenses at the schools. I'm not sure if, because we're regional, if we could have our own. But then again, would there be enough money to put into such a fund?
Right. I mean, I could, I could see us having a fund. It's definitely worth exploring. We're already on an annual basis right now. Getting a capital assessment that we are just, you know, is a part of our budget to begin with. So for us to have a. Say. A, a separate line item, it, it, it would almost actually almost reminds me of like. The ambulance fund, which is, you know, we'd have this school fund that's sitting there that's going to fund any of the capital assessments. And, and if we're going to constantly fund that, you know, the ambulance fund has receipts, obviously. We don't have receipts, but we would, we would have, you know, our, our budgeted amount for that fund, which. You know, if we look at history for the last two years, it's roughly 400,000. If we came under that, then that's what we would have to, you know, then, then we have monies left over. And if we. And if we. Went over that, then we, we'd actually have to request additional funding. To, to bring that, but it'd almost be a zero balance account, if you will, to begin with, right? There might be some monies left over from year to year, but that would just be offset by the, a future year that it's, we're going to go over.
They need, if something happens unforeseen at the school level.
Which we know happens.
Yeah, so, but they have their own. To tap into.
To the excess and deficiencies.
Yeah.
So far, right now, anyways, that's there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But that's, that's pretty minimal now, isn't it?
Yeah, it's limited based on only up to 5% and then anything over the 5% will come back to the town anyways.
Yeah, we, we can, I, I think we probably should be kicking that one around. Maybe, maybe after. After we get next year's budget done.
Yeah, once we see where we end up with all this whole discussion.
I had the stat out.
Yeah. There's so many moving pieces right now in terms of everything we've been discussing tonight.
Right. Okay, so let's. Yeah, because I think from our capital outlay perspective, let's, let's nail down our, because I think our next order of business is really around. All of these, the, the planning for these upcoming years and. This being our first time of actually looking beyond year one.
Yeah.
For, for the most part.
Right.
So, but I, I do like that idea.
Kind of meant, you know, in the future.
Yeah.
That's not possible right now.
Any other questions around the school committee update that we received or? Anything else I want to do with the district?
I don't have any, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Okay, so, so we have 45 minutes left to start talking about our capital request form submissions. I'm, I want to try to limit that to about 35 to 40 minutes, just so that we have time for the. Any other outstanding business. So town administrator Mullen has done a excellent job. Of providing us with a. worksheet, spreadsheet, if you will. That world kind of is broken down by department and then rolls everything up into a master plan. And. I think the next thing that, that we need to discuss. And, and town administrator Mullen, keep, keep me honest here. Is we talked about doing some sort of scoring around these efforts.
Yes.
And how? So we want to go back, do we want to tackle, try to tackle some of these? Do we want to just look at fiscal year 23 requests first?
So. So there's like a few thoughts I have. So one, we have, I believe a total of like 53 requests. I got 53 requests that came over. That came over and have been proposed for the next five fiscal years. However, as you'll know, we, we have a lot of, we have a lot of departments who, because this whole process is new. I like have really like front loaded this whole process. So we have a lot that have been proposed FY23. And the big question that I have. So is what priorities are real? For 23, can what, can what priorities are able to be extended out into 24, 25 and 26 as well? Because we don't, like, uh, FY23 priorities are quite substantial. And we already know, based on our available free cash at the moment. I simply wrapped up special town meeting last month. We only have, I think around $425,000 remaining in free cash. So our ability to fund, uh, you know, most of these projects in FY23. I could follow, uh, the follow-up weighed by our ability to pay. So like would I, would. I, I can, I can actually think about, oh, I, I, I go over the next three of. Over the next three or four months, like bringing in the departments who submitted a lot of these. So we try to understand what the real needs are. And how we might be able to adjust the years into much more. Oh, you know, of a five-year capital plan, and then once we do that, we can score. And then we can also. Then we have the ability to also analyze these things based on available funding sources as well. So like, and we have like a dropdown menu here. So like if we have the ability to fund a project, for example, through APU, we can designate APU and that goes into one bucket. Or, you know, like if, like if we want to recommend that some, that a department or. That a department or board of committee go to CPA, like we have that ability as well. We, uh, like we have, we're going through, as I think all of us know, a financial management review. With the division of local services, right? At the moment as well, and I think already one of the recommendations maybe to examine the ability to borrow within our levy. So like we have, so we have the ability to consider that as an option as well, like assuming we want to and we still want to. We have an excess levy, as we know, of about one point, almost 1.1 million, and we want to protect that as well. So like I really. Oh yeah, so I say that understanding the sacredness of that too. And then it's the projects in here that we can find. For example, we dedicated a cable revenue, we can consider that. Some of the ambulance fund, which like I think we all, I think we all understand is already overextended. In terms of our ability, our ability to continue paying from that. Once we have. Once we have marijuana entities, like the one on William Street open up. We are going to be able to have a deck, we are going to be able to have dedicated cannabis impact fees. So that has the ability to be a funding source, like as well, as well as the state of federal grants that we've been applying for and receiving too. So like I tried to break it up with those funding buckets, but again, with the involvement. Oh, like in the input from our department heads. Oh, you know, like I. Yeah, at the end of the day, I think we'll be better informed about. So like how to like spread everything, especially that's been proposed in FY23, out a little longer. So, and then we have, like just real, just really going through the spreadsheet, if we do pump things up longer. We, we based on the spreadsheet have, have an ability to add an inflation factor into it as well, so we can put in on that. And then how, I'm actually missing one tab here. And I don't have any, oh yeah. So like how the spreadsheet works, I just want to break it down for everybody real quickly. So going back up to the top. So like, like as we, as we go through all the proposed. As we go through all the proposal, as we go through the proposed projects. Like if we, for example, want to. So like if we want to fund the payment system for the border health, like we would go here, we would check fund. And then that automatically, I believe, the schedules are out in FY20. Oh, actually, that formula, as luck would have it, really didn't carry. That's my luck. But.
Did you have to pick a funding source or no?
Yeah, oh, thank you, Janelle. All right, when I find, oh, sorry, thank you. And then this, this, this is, say, just as a hypothetical. We want, like we want to borrow, which we wouldn't want to borrow for 13,000, but I'm just. So and then, so based on the terms, it spreads that cost out for the next 20 years.
Yes, smart. I know.
So and then, so and then, so then looking like in, then an individual. So then like an individual departments, we can see. Oh, you know, how they have, how they have tried or not tried to schedule out their priorities. We have one department here, as we know, everything's in 23. Hold on a second, I find this kind of funny too. We have another department here who has scheduled everything out in 23. And, and I promise I'm not showing partiality. But we have another department who tried to, who tried to spread out at least a little more. Even though there's a million dollar cost he's thinking about in FY23 fire chief. So, yeah. I know, I know. So actually a big part of that, hold on a second. I don't actually want to digress.
Usabilities, though.
No, it's the, the SCBAs, which hopefully for that we can get a grant as well. So there's a possibility there. So, so that's really how the spreadsheet works and how I think. Over the next three months, if we were to set up meetings, then we. Yeah, like I think we'll be able to evaluate and score based on that additional input. That is my thought.
Right.
Excellent.
Right, and, and we definitely would want to set up with the, the department heads some time to go through their requests. So, you know, for example, and we'll, we'll pick on the fire chief just because he's here. You know, he's, he's asking for a new engine and an ambulance, right? But there's two different funding sources there.
Yes, yeah, exactly.
So that's, you know, that, that one's pretty clear cut that, that, you know, with having two different funding sources. But we also want to take a look, that second funding source is the ambulance fund. If we start, if we, if we pay for the whole ambulance out of there. Where does that leave that ambulance fund? Because we don't want to deplete it and we, we have used it to offset other. I'll call them sundry, but they all add up, don't they? Other sundry items for, for. That pertain to, to the fact that we're, we're pretty special, that we have our own ambulance service. Okay, and we want to maintain that, I think. So, so we don't, we don't want to leave them cash for it either. Okay, so this is excellent. I, I think it gives us a, a pretty good picture into, into what we need to do. I, I know for, for me. Some of the department heads that I know I would want to talk to right off the bat is highway, parks and rec. Police, fire. Which communication falls up under the, the both of you, right? Up, we just the chief. So, so we'll be meeting with them. And. Schools definitely. What's the other one? Assessors as well. Because I think their request is. We need to understand their requests better.
Yep.
I think that those, I think those are the ones that jumped out at me. Does anybody else?
I agree with that. I agree with that.
Downfight any other groups, department heads that, that they think they need to meet with?
So one of the things I just also want to quickly point out, uh, like, uh, is, like, is that there are three proposed feasibility studies, uh, in here, uh, that are being proposed for fiscal year twenty-three. Uh, one, uh, like, one is, uh, I, uh, one is for like the library, which I think is really important to continue that path. Uh, then, uh, there's another feasibility study for the Fire Department as well, and, um, for the Highway Department as well. So like a building, like a bigger building capital needs have been an issue for quite some time. So. Uh, yeah, if we do have the ability to fund, it's probably also wise to think about how we do that. And if we do that, um, uh, for the upcoming annual town meeting. That's all I have now, I've spoken enough, I'll be quiet.
So do we want to schedule for February meeting, some of these? But that's your plan, Jim?
You don't think we'll run out of time?
I'm sorry.
Every other month?
Uh, yeah, which means, yeah, yeah, which means, Mr. Chairman, if, yeah, like if, uh, if we kept to the every other month's schedule at this point, we'd probably be, it would take us a while.
It would. It would.
That's the only downside, it would require more meetings. Which is a good thing, too.
Do we, do we want to try to do this a couple of meetings in January? To do, so that we can do the scoring? And get a full understanding of the ass? And then.
If we're good, we can't really score.
Oh, so, so, yeah, one other thing that is, so, uh, uh, one other thing that's actually not in here, but is really important as well, uh, like, so it's actually about our Highway Department's. It was also about our Highway Department, uh, the town, uh, uh, so the town and the Board of Selectmen, about a month and a half ago, they approved for, uh, uh, yeah, like they approved, uh, so they approved funding for a pavement management plan for the town. Uh, so that is ongoing as we speak. That will be wrapping up probably by the beginning of February. And so, uh, so like I, uh, so like I imagine from like a capital planning point of view, like it's going to recommend additional investments and. Uh, yeah, in terms of how we fund and maintain our roads, because right now, we only use the approximately three hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars a year we get in Chapter ninety money. Uh, yeah, I think that, so it's a drop in the bucket based on our ability to maintain what we have. So I want to throw that out, that that's another issue lurking.
Right.
Yes, yes.
We did that in Mad Poysen, I don't, I don't want to keep bringing up Mad Poysen.
Yeah, no, yeah, this is.
We did do, um, a borrowing, a debt exclusion.
Yeah.
Each year. Yeah, they had like a ten-year plan. Do roads, and it was like two hundred thousand every year, and they would, could just continue the projects. You know, there's one, I don't remember how many years it was for, maybe fifteen each.
Yeah, yeah.
We had a lot of other things to combine, you know, to borrow at the time. But they had a plan, yeah, to keep it going.
So, yeah, that's like another issue out there that I just. So, yeah, like I wanted to forecast into our whole conversation as we think about this whole thing. It's a little daunting, I'm not going to lie, but.
Oh, it's a, it's a lot daunting, because as soon as you finish one piece of work this year, then you start a, a, you know, a new piece of roadway next year. Well, eventually, what you did in year one, by the time you finish the whole town, what you did in year one needs to be done, done over again. So it's just going to be, it's, it's kind of, let's face it, it's, it's kind of like our, our, you know, the finance committee's commitment to the police chief when we buy a cruiser. We buy a cruiser every single year because we need to keep that fleet fresh. And that's going to be this, kind of the same concept with our roadways, especially if we keep building more roads that are going to have to be maintained by the Highway Department. So.
So, yeah, I wanted to mention that as well, that's critically important too.
Yeah, that's good. I did know some of the departments didn't provide any backup to what they were requesting.
No.
You know, like the transfer station. System there.
Yes.
I think there's some other departments that need to supply some backup before we can make a decision.
Right, I agree.
Right, and, and honestly, the POS system is a great example, though, of, of, is that something that we can capitalize on across multiple departments? Okay? Um, and, you know, I'm looking over at you, Mary. But, but also, I mean, but it's, but it's also, you know, it's the town clerk role, right? And all the, all the fees that, 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 that's being collected there. Um, it's the, the, the building inspector for all the permits, right? You know, can, you know, is this something that we can look at and see if we can't get some economies of scale? Um, you know, and, and I think, you know, when it, it, it's a beautiful write-up, what it, what it talks about, you know, because it talks about, you know, how, you know, what if we get a bounced check?
I know.
You know, what, you know.
A lot of the volume is forming our budgeting.
How do we, how do we chase outstanding invoices, right? So we're, you know, we start to automate all of that and, you know. So, so how do we do, how do we take, take this idea, that's a really good idea, and, and get it implemented across the entire town so that we can, you know, start, start automating this? And it's a convenience to our townspeople as well. If you have a point-of-sale system, then you can start accepting, you know, debit cards and credit cards as well, instead of just a, a check, right? So.
Little bank accounts to reconcile.
I know.
They always go on.
But, but no, but it should be easy to automate, because you, at the point-of-sale, you're going to plug in what type of transaction it is. Oh, this is a building permit.
We have online, and you know, the building inspector has online, you know, they, they, online, you know, it permits in the fires, side departments doing it now. Their permits, so.
Right, do the same vendor as well.
Yep, and so again, economies of scale right there, right? Yeah.
It's actually worked out very.
Yeah. Good, okay. Okay, uh, let's see.
Well, another thing was inventory. I know the High, uh, Highway didn't break inventory.
Yes, yeah.
What do you think? Yeah, this needs to do.
I agree.
An inventory, so we can.
That's a really good point. So, yeah, when they come before us, we'll ask them to provide their inventory. If we don't. So they already have it.
And that's down the road of maintaining an inventory.
Right.
Yeah, we have some, but we don't have everything right now, which is another.
Even like all your IT, all your computers.
All of our assets, and then like our leased assets, which is another gazpiz.
No, I have trouble, there'll be time, there's always one more you can do.
There is a spreadsheet. How accurate or up to date it is.
Right. And we put it out there, who's the procurement officer now? Is that, yeah, it's you?
Yes.
That we were looking at, maybe getting some software to do, do some of this tracking for us. And we need to give people like the, the Fire Chief and the Police Chief and the Highway Department access to it.
Yep.
So that they can update it, right? So on an annual basis, we get updated mileages, um, and that kind of thing. And it'd also be great if we.
That's a good point.
If we were able to update it with what our repair costs were for some of that equipment during the course of the year, because at some point where you've got an old engine, fire engine, sitting out there, and we're paying more to repair it than it would cost for us to replace it, we need to have those, that information available to us. Okay. Great points, thank you, Brenda. Okay. Any other discussion? So, so let's, let's go ahead on, on the process, on the, on the spreadsheet here. Any other, other comments or questions on this? Okay. So, we should probably try to set some dates in January then. That would be good for us to gather department heads, um, and us together. So. Calendar. Wednesdays are probably crazy for every town employee because of the selectmen meeting and everything. So, do we feel better doing these on Tuesdays or Thursdays?
Either works for me.
The only thing, Thursday nights for, Thursday nights for Concom and CPC. Uh, and this is why we have to be out of here by seven, because there's a ComCom meeting. I think generally Tuesday evening meetings are easier. I don't, so I don't think there's a lot of other things that conflict as much as they do on Thursday nights.
Okay. Because Tuesdays work for this group.
The second Tuesday I have meetings.
So we'll skip the second Tuesday for selectmen.
We can also use prime time too, I mean.
Yeah.
We don't have a bunch of people here, so prime time might be.
Yeah, no, I, that's a good point too.
So if we look at the month of January, do we want to shoot for?
Oh, if possible, this is just me. If we can stay away from the second and fourth, just because that's a day, so there's, those are the same week of, um, as a Board of Selectmen meeting. And I'll be, so I'll be having like a lot to prepare for those anyways. So if we can do it on the off week, that would work better for my workflow.
So, okay, so.
Assuming I have a workflow.
The second, the second week would be the twelfth of January is the select meeting?
Yeah, yeah, the twelfth and the twenty.
The twelfth and the twenty-sixth, okay, so if we worked in the eighteenth and February first.
That's. Yeah, that's really good.
Okay, so, so one eighteen. I, I think so, I, I, I like it too, just, I, I mean, especially for the town employees who this is beyond your normal day, and you're right over there anyways, so. Okay, so, uh.
It hits in the first?
Two, yeah, February first for, um, what department heads. Okay. And then our normal weeding, meeting then would be, so let's see, twenty-six would be the next. So the ninth and the, so the sixth, the, the week of the, um, February fourteenth would be our normal meeting, and I think that doesn't conflict with the selectmen's meeting, right?
It doesn't.
Okay. So do we want to hold, do we just, do we want to start sticking to Tuesdays then? At five-thirty then? So, okay, so let's.
Is that the fifteenth of it?
Yeah, so the fifteenth. Two fifteen would be.
I was going to say, I love you, but Valentine's Day.
Yeah. So I said, I said the week of the fourteenth, that's all. So, okay, so, so we'll, we'll look at the fifteenth as kind of being our, our opportunity to do scoring. Any, we might have to invite a department head or two in for any last clarification or discussion.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Okay, so the eighteenth and the first, um. Yeah, you and I can coordinate if we want to.
Yep, that's fine.
You know, if you want to just shoot me a proposed, here's what I was thinking. Yeah, here's what I was thinking.
Yep.
That'll work. And then, um, okay, good, so we have our next meeting set. Okay. Any other capital outlay committee business that can be brought up by anyone?
I don't have any, Mr. Chair.
We'll entertain a motion to adjourn then.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All right, those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right, thank you, everyone. Thank you. You said seven.
Yeah, no, this is really good, I think. Huh? So, so I have to say, I can't take all the credit. Uh, so like I'm like a big believer of using templates.
Yeah.
And so, so like a year and a half ago, I worked with Mac Abrahams. No, no, it's, uh, yeah, it went off on itself.
Okay.
Nope, it didn't. Thank you.